Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for July 21st, 2015. Welcome everybody, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag and the state of New Mexico, the DSA and the Department of Public Safety among all the United Constitution.
Approval of the work session agenda, Madam Manager, is there any changes that need to come on the agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
Is a motion in second to approve the work session agenda, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify to say no.
Aye.
The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend, however, there will be no public input permitted. So the first item on the agenda today, or the next item on the agenda today, is to review the July 23rd, 2015, regular meeting agenda. And I'll turn that over to Charlene for the rest of that bullet point.
We, item B is a public hearing. This will be the final public hearing to discuss the increase in the size of the Board of County Commissioners from three to five members. This is the final public hearing before you vote in August. Next item, financial reports, the expenditure report. Linda, do you want to go over that briefly?
Yes, I would finish it. Commissioners, Chairman, members of the Board, you have a packet in front of you for the expenditure report approval for the period ending July 20th, 2015. It's included in this packet is accounts payable checks in a total of $1,726,554.36. There's a check in there to Holly Frontier Refinery. This is for oil for the world special projects in the amount of $104,981.40. A check to Malloy Dodge in the amount of $25,600, and this is for a police truck for the Sheriff's Department. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $91,787.51, and this is for aviation fuel lease payment for the month of June. There's a check to the City of Bayard in the amount of $9,161.84, and this is for the fiscal year 2015 library funding. A check to WH Pacific in the amount of $16,546.95, and this is for services on the airport action plan agreement. There's a check to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $32,909.41, and this is for the software license renewal for 2016, and this is for the Eagle Recorder. There's a check to Architecture Workshop in the amount of $8,081.25, and this is for architectural services at the conference center and for the evidence vault at the Sheriff's Office. There's a check to New Mexico County Insurance Authority in the amount of $226,005, and this is for the workers' compensation policy for fiscal year 2016. And there's a check in there to Wright Express Fuel in the amount of $31,409.36, and this is for the June 2015 fuel charges. Also included in this expenditure report is payroll checks in the amount, the total of $429,820.28, and this is for pay period 13, 14, and 15, and for the academic incentive pay. Any questions?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item C, approved, disapproved proclamation proclaiming August 1st, 2015 as Davilia Day.
Davilia.
Davilia Day. I knew I was going to say that wrong. Item D, approved, disapproved Grant County Sheriff's Department Use of Force Policy II. Earl, do you have anything you need to add on that? No, okay.
No, it's, actually, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, actually, we're just updating our current policy that we have. We're just bringing it up to law with the way the-
Can you highlight the changes?
The main thing, change on the use of force policy is we're moving away from the reactive control model, which is a model that we were trained in in the beginning that was color-coordinated, leading you to steps of how to deal with aggressive people. We've changed it to where now we're following case law, making it a little bit more simpler for the guys to understand how to protect themselves out there and how to deal with the general public.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And I think everything about that, reading through that, being an ex-police officer, you know, it's, uh, there's a lot of information there that goes through your mind in a split second. And as you know, that's what gets a lot of police officers hurt or killed, is thinking, do I or don't I have it? And I've looked at the other end of that barrel and had to make that decision if I was going to shoot. So, reading that, it still scares me, when you read it, that it's a huge, huge responsibility, and I congratulate you for staying on top of it.
Thank you. Madam Assistant Abby has reviewed this. Okay.
Next item, approved, disapproved Grant County Sheriff's Department Vehicle Pursuit Policy.
Just, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on that one, all we're doing is changing the pursuit policy in regards to pursuing anybody that has committed a misdemeanor. We've changed it to where it's strictly felony and it's a known felony. A lot of times when they initiate pursuits, we don't know what we have, so we gotta pursue based on the policy, depending on the weather conditions, the way the general public is. So, all we did is remove, not pursuing it, we know it's a misdemeanor, we're not going to pursue anybody, but if it's a known felony that needs immediate attention, we will continue. It's just clarifying that, that we will not pursue misdemeanors anymore.
Yeah, and I particularly applaud you for changing this one, because I think that your officers' safety is much more important than apprehending a misdemeanor. Somebody might have committed a misdemeanor, and the general public is also in harm's way every time you're in a pursuit, so I applaud you for doing this. Madam Assistant Abby has reviewed this one also. Anything else?
Abby's reviewed all the policies on the agenda today. Item F, approved, disapproved Grant County Sheriff's Department Retention Period and Release of Sheriff Department Records, Policy 34.
Chairman, just to clarify this a little bit, all we did was update the retention period, which, based on some of the case law that we've come across, now that we are using the pal camera video and stuff like that, we've changed that to where we keep it a minimum of three years because of the liability of being able to be sued. We have that at least for three years, and we just changed some of the dates, not dates of time periods, on a lot of them, just to cover stuff like that. That's all that we did on that policy.
Statute limitations?
Yes, for federal, to get sued federally, yes. And Abby also reviewed this one.
And although, all these changes are actually more cautious than they were before, so.
I'm good with that.
Item G, approved, disapproved Grant County Sheriff's Department Use of X-26 Advanced Taser Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on this one, all we did was change, removed the reactive control model and based it on the use of force, the new policy that we in place, we just removed the use of the reactive control model. That's all there is on that one.
Thanks, Harold. Item, item H, approved, disapproved, and this should read delinquent solid waste liens. Those liens are in for your review.
You have some more to read. Some of them are news.
Item I, American Civil Liberties Union of New Mexico Southwest Chapter Discussion of Detention Center Oversight Committee. We have a request from a local chapter of the ACLU to discuss implementation of a detention center oversight committee, and a few members will be present on Thursday to, and that's just for discussion purposes only.
From the ACLU?
Yes. Next item, J, approved, disapproved Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Special Management Inmates Policies and Policy and Procedures. Do you want to comment, Mike?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this policy is, it is a new policy, and the purpose of this policy is the Association of Counties has been going around to the detention facility around the state, so they felt that this was a need, a special need, for those special need management inmates that we have, some of those that have some mental issues and other issues. And basically, it is a new policy. We have put this together with the support of the Association of Counties, and basically what this policy does is it's, we're gonna, we're going to help the special needs inmates, we're going to allow them more time out, they're going to have, essentially, the biggest part of this is, other than the special needs that we're going to provide them, they'll have, in a sense, more freedom and space to, you know, to be out. We have been giving them the rec time out, but we're going to put them in a situation where they can freely be walking around whenever available and help them, and that way, the auspices behind this is to allow them to have kind of more freedom and stuff inside the facility, and that way they don't regress while they're in and selfing themselves. And it's, again, that Association of Counties came by and we're following their guidelines.
Okay.
Item K, approved, disapproved Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Use of Force and Restraits.
Chairman, Commission Members, this is, we're updating not only these policies, but all the rest of our policies, and this is an update. We were also, the Sheriff's Department was using the reactive control model. Essentially, we've gone into a little bit more in-depth. The change on this policy is going to, what we've inserted is our CERT team. As you all know, I've given you reports throughout the year on their progression and their training. So this also includes a CERT team, but it outlines when the use of force is necessary, the de-escalation issues that we have. The officers will then start with a verbal de-escalation, and then if that doesn't work, then it'll proceed to either hands-on or for the use of O.C., less than lethal, and then it'll continue. So it really goes more into in-depth, and I just wanted to say also that all the officers throughout the year, we have been certifying them in the use of force. So it does have some upgrades in the policy that we have before, so it's a very good policy.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
And this is also have Abby's stamp of approval. Item M, approved, disapproved, oh, whoops, item L, sorry. Approved, disapproved Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Less Than Lethal Delivery System. Mike?
That's kind of strange. I was interested in the outcome on this one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commission Member, this is also a new policy. We have enacted a less than lethal policy, and the less than lethal, it takes into effect, again, the O.C. spray and those, those issues where we feel that if need be, that the use of force escalates into the use of less than lethal, we're talking about, you know, the pepper balls and those types of things that are, that are going to be projected through a, the use of a firearm, and we, all the officers, and this is only going to be used for the CERT members, they're the only ones that are going to be certified in the use of this, and also, I just want you to know that there's going to be very strict guidelines as to when this is going to be used, and this is going to be as a last resort, if you will, to protect the safety of the inmates and also the detention officers. And I also want to let you know in the policy that I will be the only one that will be authorized to allow that use of force, or less than lethal force.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Item N, M is a new, a new item that we're adding. Approved, disapproved, the lease or purchase of a new ambulance for the HeLa Regional Medical Center, EMS. Jeff, do you want to explain what it is that you're doing?
Good morning, sir. Good morning. How are you? Good, how are you? Is it on? Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we, we just currently, recently bought a new ambulance, which are, which we came to before. We've had a little bit of difficulties with it, but everything's in the final stages. To kind of give you a little bit rundown, I do have some handouts for you. As far as the hospital goes on the ambulance side, we're doing pretty well financially. Last year, if you compare last year's totals to what we're doing now, last year we were $144,742 in the red. This year, with a bunch of changes, with different changes in leadership, different procedures, we're now $198,786 in the black. So we made some good changes. Unfortunately, right now, with the new changes, we don't really have the finances to actually purchase an ambulance. The ambulance that we're looking at right now is $89,900. We're going with a Sprinter. If you approve it, I'll have these handouts to you. To give you an idea, right now, our ambulance is creating about 90 miles per gallon. Sprint is 18,000 miles per gallon, so it's doubling our efficiency and our cost right now, people are setting their own gallon. And that's why they're, um, this is currently for the month on transfers. We're already at 17 transfers for the past two weeks. We're averaging anywhere from 19 to 23 transfers a month. Last year at this time, we did seven for the month. So with the changes we've done, we're using more trucks, we're actually trying to open up another crew where we can do transfers 24/7. Right now, we do a long-distance transfer cutoff at 1 o'clock. That kind of puts the hospital in a situation for those patients that need to get out because of weather, whatever, so we're trying to get some crews up. So there is some adjustments financially that we're going to have to make. What I'm coming to you for is to go ahead and use our, a portion of our fire funds. Currently, right now, we do have $86,000 and some change in there. We were going to use a portion of that for the down payment of our last ambulance, but with the new negotiations, we're not putting anything down other than what the hospital contributed of $10,000. With the trade-in, we don't quite know which truck we're going to trade in right now, so we don't know what our trade-in value is going to be, but estimated about $10,000 trade-in, so we're essentially going to find that $79,900 for the next five years.
On the old one?
Pardon me?
On the old one or this?
On the new one coming up, that's estimate. I don't have any totals for you yet, because I wanted to get your approval ahead of time. I did learn some good lessons of buying an ambulance now. We went through quite a bit of trials. We've kind of have those ironed out now, so we have made some mistakes, but with this, buying this ambulance, it's going to save us tremendously in fuel. The cost, we're saving about $25,000 from the purchase that we just recently purchased. I'm also going to be working with Priscilla. We're going to be going through the New Mexico Finance Authority, which, right now, our ambulance is, I think we have it at 3.43% interest, and I believe through the, did you ever get the email back, Priscilla?
I did, it was about 1.25%.
Okay, wow. So we'll be refinancing-
What was that number again?
1.25%.
So in the near future, within, once we get everything set up, we'll be refinancing the current ambulance under the 1.25, as well as the new ambulance as well. We haven't received the new ambulance credits yet, there's some legal stuff going through, we should have it within this next week.
So how much of the $86,500 are you going to use?
Just a portion, like $10,000 for the down payment, and then the payment on this other ambulance we just bought was $25,300 and change, I don't have that total with me.
And this, go ahead.
So, next year it'll be $25,000, the payment's not due until July of next year. So we'll make that $25,000, and then on top of the new ambulance, which will be roughly about $15,000.
Do they get about $86,000 a year out of power points?
No. Our average is about anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000.
They will get enough, yeah, they'll get enough.
So every year, once we get that $35,000, we'll actually pay for the payment, and we'll still keep that $86,000 roughly in there. Right.
And now, this, this particular ambulance, is it capable of going on all runs like every other ambulance, or is it mainly just for transfers?
No, it's, we've, I've done some research, FedEx uses it on the highway, they have no problems with it whatsoever, except for headlights. That's been, that issue's been resolved. They've had no problems with the chassis, the brakes, anything like that. Of course, they're running vans, we'd be running an ambulance box.
It'd be a little heavier.
It'd be a little heavier, and that's, they actually get 23 miles to the gallon, but talking with the company, it's over in Ohio, they actually get 18 miles per gallon, they have the same, I guess, trips and mountain ranges as we do.
Have you looked into why your transfers has increased from last year to this year?
Typically, what happened is, on our transfers, it was made a decision administrative at the previous director, that we were losing money doing transfers, so a lot of times we would actually call in our Elite, which is a company out of Dami and El Paso, and they would take the transfers for us, but we have since done some research, we tried a trial period for three months, and it's, I mean, we're getting really good returns with it, which it shows in our budget. So as far as more transfers, we're, helicopters, have you noticed, have gone down quite a bit as far as the out-of-town flights, just to cost reasons, so we're doing a lot more.
So years before that, Jeff, you said the year before was seven, and then the year before that, was there a trend of about seven or in that area?
We did actually study, I could have, I should have brought it in for you, but our transfers, on average, from last year, July, was anywhere from 10 to 14 a month. And since I took over in October, we immediately started doing transfers, and I think it didn't go up very much initially, because I think there was that change, the process, but by November, we jumped up to, I think, 17 transports.
My concern was that, you know, you're talking about need, and if that need reflected just on that one year, this last year, of being up, and then this next year it's going to go back down to seven or eight or nine, then would there still be a need?
Absolutely. Yeah. I can tell you, our call volumes, on average now, and it shows on your trend there, our average calls are anywhere from 380 to 410 calls a month, and we're transporting, you know, around 160, 180. So our transfers are going up, the maintenance costs are obviously going up a little bit more, because our trucks are, you know, they're anywhere from 150 to about 160,000 miles.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to contact, oops, contacts and agreements, this is also a new item. Approved, disapproved Agreement A 15-26, professional services agreement with Luis Alvarado for services with the Grant County Surveillance Program. This is Margaret Brigay's program, this is one of her contractors. Moving on to resolutions. Item O, approved, disapproved Addendum Number One to Resolution R 14-24 to include a county maintained road to the CAPS projects. Earl, do you want to explain that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, with the oil prices going down, we had enough money left over to go ahead and tip seal one more road, so I added Broken Arrow to the list, so we can get it done, so we make sure we spend all that money.
Okay. Questions? Thank you.
Item P, approved, disapproved Resolution R 15-20 Budget Adjustment. Linda, do you want to go over this, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's a budget adjustment resolution that'll take care of all adjustments for our final fiscal year 2015 budget. We have a cash transfer in the amount of $80,575 out from the general fund into the airport fund, and this will cover the additional expenses for the fuel and for the lease payment on the truck. And we have a increase in revenue in the amount of $113,456 to the 2015 DWI distribution grant, and we have $6,196 revenue increase into the DWI grant. This is for the actual CDWI grant. We have $3,161 revenue increase into the airport runway maintenance grant, an increase in revenue of $39,938, and this is for the Viva Santa Rita Assessment District. And we have $167,023 revenue increase into the member's senior, oh, I'm sorry, into the airport fund. We also have an increase in expenditures for the member's senior advisory board in the amount of $125, increase of $1,207 for the 2014 SEP senior program, $100,520 for the indigent fund, $1,363 into the DWI 2014 grant distribution, $113,456 for the 2015 DWI distribution grant, $2,810 to the 2014 CDWI grant, $6,196 for the 2015 DWI grant, $9,798 for the DWI monitoring program, $3,466 for the Guarda Cantinas program, $2,981 for the DWI screening awareness program, $1,014 for the DARE program, and $3,161 for the airport runway, $39,938 for Viva Santa Rita, and $43 for the Dos Gregos Maintenance Agreement, $247,598 into the airport fund. And then we have a intra-budget transfer, decreasing the commissioners' fund by $12,245 and transferring it into the maintenance department.
Next item, item Q, approved, disapproved Resolution R 15-21, Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments Agreements and Dues for Fiscal Year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, Designate Voting Member and Alternate. This is our annual resolution to continue participation in the COG and appoint your voting delegate and alternate, and the delegate needs to be an elected official. The dues did go up a little bit, but that was included in the final budget, and it's my understanding that they've not had an increase in dues in what, 15 years?
That part you haven't had to raise a lot, neither have I. Did you want to say anything? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak before you about our annual membership dues. And so today, I just wanted to say, Charlene is absolutely right, we are increasing our dues this year. We've had a 25% decrease over a period of last five years in our funding from state appropriation, although we continue to try to seek additional fundings from the state. We all know that the additional responsibilities that are coming down from the state continue to increase with no increase in state appropriation dollars, unfortunately. But our goal is to continue to maintain the services that we provide to you, and so that's our ultimate goal. our ultimate goal. So your support in moving this resolution forward is greatly appreciated. And at this time, I'd really like to just open up, see if you have any questions of me, or anything that I can answer for you at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for Priscilla? No? Nope? Okay.
I do feel good, though.
Thank you. I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Glad to know you're there.
Well, I don't want to have to retire, so I want to keep on going, so, even though I know I can.
She's there. Somebody would want to retire.
Thank you.
Next item, R, approve, disapprove, resolution R fifteen-bash-twenty-two, notice of intent to consider the adoption of an ordinance increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section Seven of the New Mexico Constitution. This would be a notice of intent to adopt the ordinance, which will be on your agenda in August.
Right, so that would be, this resolution only is basically to give notice that there's, that we may or may not adopt an ordinance.
Absolutely correct.
Gives all the steps, all the things that we've done to just make it accomplish that.
Any more questions on that? No. Item S, approve, disapprove, resolution R fifteen-bash-twenty-three, designating a representative and alternate pursuant to CAP entity joint powers agreement. As a resolution states, you approved the joint powers agreement at your last meeting. At this time, you would have to, you need to designate a representative and an alternate to that board. Item T, approve, disapprove, resolution R fifteen-bash-twenty-four, this is also a new item, resolution creating the Loma Verde State Subdivision Improvement District. In May, we had the public hearing, and they've had all of the time allowed for protests and not had any. So this is the next step, is a resolution creating the improvement district. Is there anything you want to add, Anthony? Next item, be recessing of the Board of County Commissioners and reconvening of the County Indigent and Health Plan Claims Board to approve or disapprove item U, which is a health plan claims for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. It's a total of a hundred-and-twenty claims in the amount of eighty-four-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and sixty-three cents, and no claims for HeLa Regional Ambulance for this period.
Anything needs to be added to this agenda for Thursday?
I'm seeing the other counties either.
Yes, that's good. No? Okay, then we will move into county reports. Mr. Cunningham, would you like to be first today? Don't forget to turn on your microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Like to start off with a review of the finances from HeLa Regional Medical Center. And as a reminder, these finances are a month behind, so these are the May finances. We're currently working on closing out our fiscal year end of June. But in the month of May, we had a three-hundred-thousand-dollar positive bottom line. Our year-to-date, as of the end of May, was a negative one-point-five million, which was pretty much in align with what we budgeted for this year. As I've mentioned in the past, this is a big year, a big rebuilding year for us, and we're putting a lot of money into our IT infrastructure and our physician practices. And so we're doing our end-of-year closeout, so we'll, you know, see where that goes. On the cash side of the accounting equation, though, we're up about four million dollars compared to last year. So there's, as you probably know, there's two sides to that accounting equation, your revenue-expenses that aggregate each year, and then there's your cash side. So cash is up. Our days in cash are up to a hundred-and-forty-one. They were a hundred-and-twenty-eight last year. So our costs, we've continued to hold down, and we continue to accumulate on the cash We have a couple new faces in HeLa Regional, well, new positions, I would say, our current CNO, Pat Shaka. She's been a nurse for fifty-three years. She's going to be retiring at the end of August. We've gone through an extensive interview process, and we have made a hire into that position, and we hired internally, that nurse was Peggy White. Many of you may know Peggy. She's been around a long time, working in the community as a paramedic in our fire department, and she's been a nurse for us for many years, and she now serves as our chief nursing officer. Peggy and Pat Shaka are kind of managing that role together now, as Pat transitions out into retirement. But we're really proud of Peggy White and have a lot of confidence and high hopes in her ability to continue to move HeLa Regional forward, continue to commit to giving the best nursing care possible for everyone in this room and for everybody in the communities we serve. We're also, soon, in the next couple weeks, going to be pulling in some candidates to fill our permanent CFO, our Chief Financial Officer position. That's been vacant for a few months. That's been a huge challenge for us. We have approximately four candidates that we'll be bringing in from off-site to start those interviews. That'll be an extensive interview process. We have a project that we'll be starting in the very near future. I think it's coming through today to start in our approval process. But it's a project that we will be collaborating with the county and with law enforcement to take a really critical look at how we can explore better ways to manage the costs and the charges to inmates and those citizens in custody. And hopefully, one of the outcomes of that will be a positive improvement in the funds that we request from the indigent fund through the county. And I'm really excited to work with our county manager and law enforcement on that project. I appreciate the meetings we've been having about that topic. HeLa Regional, we're really excited. We've been involved in probably a four-year project. It's called the Baby Friendly Project. There's a national organization that has proposed a model for giving the best possible evidence-based care for our mothers and our babies. So we've been involved in this project, this certification project, for the last four years. Mary Gruska was, has been the project manager for that project. Our entire labor and delivery department, maternity department, our local physicians have been involved with this for many years, and we recently, within the last two weeks, received a designation, it's called the patient, or, excuse me, Baby Friendly designation, and it merely acknowledges all the work that we've done around giving the best care possible for our mothers and babies and families. We're really proud of that designation. The last thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, the Accountable Care Act, as we continue to move forward into these huge challenges in healthcare and reimbursement, the next series of changes that are coming are things like, we've heard about bundled payments, value-based purchasing, those kind of things. Further changes to the reimbursement structure in healthcare, and it's requiring more and more collaboration between healthcare agencies and our physician community. Historically, you know, there was too much separation. Doctors did their thing, medical practitioners did their thing, hospital did their thing. Too much separation, too much siloed activity. So this new environment, and I think it's a positive change, requires more collaboration from us all. You know, the overall goal, some of the big goals with the ACA are to decrease overall costs of care, while at the same time, increasing the patient experience, the quality of care and patient satisfaction, and managing the health of our populations better. This is a huge undertaking, and there are many models from where people would attempt, or groups would attempt, to do this. We're moving forward, I want the Commissioners to know, and the community to know, that we're moving forward with a major project, a major collaborative project in the community, to formally partner with our medical providers, so that we can actually meet this triple aim, driving down costs, improving quality, managing the health of our populations better. And I put this out there, not just for informational purposes, there's multiple ways to attempt to do this. The model that you're going to be hearing more and more about in these meetings and out in the community is, this collaborative approach that HeLa Regional is involving in with our physicians, is an attempt to do this in a way that supports the sustainability of our medical practitioners in this community. It supports the sustainability of the hospital. And the third win, this is a triple win, it better cares for our patients, our citizens, helps them get the care that they need as close to home as possible, so that we can keep more people in the community when it's appropriate. So I wanted you to just, I wanted to just share some preliminary information. It's, the project is called Creating a Clinically Integrated Network. So you're going to hear that term a lot. You may even hear some competing plans out in the community, and we should talk about those. We're already talking about them as a medical community. And so more and more, you're going to hear about the model that the hospital's involved in with many of our medical practitioners, and maybe some competing models. The model that we are involved in, and involved in with many of our medical practitioners, is for the sustainability of the hospital, the sustainability of our medical practitioners, and to create a better model of care for our citizens. And so I just wanted to introduce this concept of a clinically-integrated network, because I'm going to be reporting on that every month and those efforts. And you'll be hearing potentially some competing models out there in the community, and we want to have some really thoughtful dialogue about the differences of what, you know, the model we're involved in versus potentially another model that may be coming forward. That's all I have for you all today, and I stand for questions.
Do I have any questions from that? Nope. Nice. Once again, I always appreciate the most forthcoming reports you've given us. The last year or so has been a joy compared to previous times. Financially, what do you see for the next year?
Next year, so this year's a big rebuilding year. We may, when all is said and done, be at break-even. We may be a little bit on the negative side on the revenue expense, and that's to be expected. About halfway through the year, we're still involved in this major computer upgrade. This is the biggest project HeLa Regional's been involved in, you know, potentially ever. And this is going to carry on probably about four to six months into this fiscal year. So we're going to still continue to be challenged with the enormity of that project. But on the second half of the fiscal year, we will start to see the benefits of all that effort around our new IT system. So I believe in this next fiscal year, we'll start to see the rewards of all the groundwork late in the first two years. We'll start to have a higher bottom line at the end of the year, hopefully in that two to three percent, and in the following year, get back up into that four to five percent bottom line. So we continue to, I think, present strong financial results in this environment. You know, many hospitals are, I think, I read an article the other day, sixty-three percent of hospitals are maybe at break-even, twenty-three percent of hospitals have a negative bottom line, so it's an incredibly challenging environment. But we're making enough money to continue to fund equipment necessary to stay current with the changes in technology. So things are tight, but things are still going well.
Well, if you will for us, I'm sure that these guys are feeling with me, and I thank all the employees for us.
Will do.
Of fighting through all the hard times the last eighteen months or so, and I can see, I think we can see daylight. And so please thank them all. Thank your board, and thank you.
I send all employee email every week with different updates. This next weekend, when I send it out, I'll give the thanks from the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Mike, good evening, the detention center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Members. I respectfully submit my report for June nineteenth through July sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. First three items on the agenda, the items remain the same. On item number four, on our training update, Department Training Sergeant Galindo has been conducting refresher training for all department officers in the areas of defensive tactics in OC, and this is in conjunction with our use of force policy. So we're making sure that we're getting all those officers certified. And this is being done while the officers are on shift. Deputy Administrator Andazola and Sergeant Galindo and Officer Nathaniel Fisher will be attending our PRIA training, and this is also going to be a policy that you're going to be put before you, and this is a new policy on our PRIA, and this is sexual assault. And this is, again, a recommendation from the association, the county, so we're sending them to this training, and so they're, you know, this is going to be in conjunction with also that policy. And also, we'll probably be sending a couple officers to the New Mexico Sheriff's Conference. This conference has a number of corrections, meetings, and training opportunities for correctional officers. Item number five, on our intervention, the support inmate support program. We're still putting together coordinator's position, some of the funding opportunities in the budget. We're exploring possibilities from grants, some foundation assistance, and help and support of this project. And I'd also like to thank Charlene and Alex Brown for the support that they've been giving this project. They've been really helpful to us. I want to thank you for that. Item number six, on our recognition program, Officer Fisher has been nominated for Employee of the Month, and Officer Fisher's willingness to accept the supervisor responsibility, his leadership qualities, and dedication to the detention facility qualify him for this nomination. Item number seven, on our detention statistics, the average daily population for this reporting period is sixty-nine, which is the same as last month. High population males is sixty-three, which is three less than last month. High population females is fourteen, it remained the same. For the month of this reporting period, we had sixty-nine inmates booked into the facility, which is the same as last reporting period, it showed no increase in activity. Our average length of stay for this reporting period is nine-point-three-five days. The current demographic snapshots, I put several reports in there if you have any questions. This is just kind of to give you an idea of, you know, who we have in there, and just, you know, some of the inmate population statistics, some of the gender information, and then on the COO's daily population, this is by day, so you can see how many inmates are coming in by day, and some of the daily information about the population and the inmates. And then the last one will be the classification tools, and this is the four categories of the inmates that we have in the facility, and how they were, not how they were classified, but the numbers that were classified in each category. So if you have any questions, we'd be more than glad to answer those questions for you on those reports. No, I just wanted to give you a little more information on the inmate population.
The average length of stay, under the felonies, generally, your felonies as far as being booked in are less than your misdemeanors. Because of that amount of days, is that because serving out sentencing?
Yes, again, because of that also, and it can also be attributed to some of the recidivism that we're seeing.
And also, Mike, you know, this is why we were having a problem with being sentencing people out of district court to three-hundred-and-sixty-four days in the county jail, just to try to keep it under sixty-five, so they wouldn't have to send them to prison. Is that still an issue?
Yes, sir. All right. My report, item number eight, the average agency totals for the month, Silver City Police Department at a hundred-and-four, Grant County Sheriff's Department at thirty-four, New Mexico State Police at eighteen, Beard Police at twelve, Santa Clara had six, and Hurd PD had one. The detention facility, item number nine, we conducted nineteen district court transports. Division One magistrate court, we conducted twenty-five. Division Two magistrate court was zero. Silver City Municipal Court, we had six. Santa Clara, we had zero. Beard Municipal Court, we had zero. So the total number of medical transports included during this period were fifteen, for a total number of sixty-five for the month. Our jail utilization and occupancy, again, the felony levels were twenty-nine, misdemeanor levels were sixty-nine. Other issues of probation and warrants were ninety-two, for a total of a hundred-and-ninety. Total hours in custody are forty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety. Offense levels show a decrease as compared to last month, and statistics reflect the reporting period for July, June nineteenth through July sixteenth. That's my report, sir.
Any further questions? Thanks, Mike. Randy?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll start quickly with public works, just weeds, trying to take care of the weeds with all the rain we've had, especially at Baton Park and around a lot of our facilities. We leaky roofs and other things comes with rain, trying to keep up with that. I think the, you know... I think, uh, you know, Justin and his group's doing a good job, just making sure that, uh, you know, that nothing's getting too, too damaged before we can get to it. Uh, we had some leaks in, in the back of the sheriff's department, and hopefully we can, that has kinda recited a little bit, and we can move on with that. Conference Center, uh, would be closing now, I think the last, uh, function there is gonna be August the 5th. Uh, as soon as that's over, there'll be no more in there, Forest Services having, uh, their final action plan, trails plan, uh, community meeting there, and after that, uh, there will be no more activity at, at the Conference Center. Airport, again, weeds, making sure we're controlled, had a lot of rain out there. Uh, we had inspection by the FAA, uh, come down, uh, had some, some minor issues, but in the time allocated for us to clear those up, we did that. Um, so I wanna commend Justin and, and James and David out there for working really hard and making sure that we were, we're ready for that. Now, the fire truck out there, um, the R training, uh, New Mexico, the, the academy, the fire academy in Socorro has, uh, let their, their certification expire. Uh, they are no longer gonna, to, uh, be able to train us on R as far as keeping our certification. So what we've done there is I've called around other airports, we're gonna, we're working with, with other airports and also with current Air Force Base, uh, they are gonna allow us to train with them, they're gonna put a training on for us free of charge. Um, so that's gonna help us, uh, with all the, the smaller airports in New Mexico, especially here in the south with Tbilidoso, uh, Las Cruces, and ourselves are gonna be able to go over to current Air, Air Force Base and train there. I think that's really about it. Fire departments, as you know, I mean, it's been a really slow fire season, uh, but still we're volunteers and we're still training structurally, so just because the wildland fires are down, um, it was really quiet during the 4th of July, I wanna thank everybody for, uh, for, you know, keeping up with that, making sure that everything was safe and we didn't have any major issues, uh, with fires during the 4th of July. Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department will have an open house this Saturday, uh, I'm sure you all got your invitations, appreciate if you can come. Uh, it's to show off the new addition to their facility, new training room, uh, and a lot of all this other stuff that goes with it, there'll be some refreshments there, and so appreciate if everybody could show up to that. Back to the airport real quick, on the fueling side, I did some calculations in the last couple of days, uh, on the fuel. Since January, we've been able to, um, if I can get just to the back page here, is total received is $251,0286 receivable, but we purchased $265,000. Um, so the reason for that is we just had to purchase a $33,000 of fuel. Um, if you look at, uh, our inventory, we have, we have probably about $40,000 of inventory between avgas and jet fuel. We also have about another $25,000 in outstanding balances coming in. Um, so, uh, we're doing good, uh, it's getting now to a point, this is just since January of this year, so it looks like we're moving forward with that. Uh, I wanna thank, um, you know, Boutique Air continuing to buy fuel from us, the Forest Service, even though they had a slow fire season, the smokejumpers were here, they bought fuel. Uh, there was 11 fires in the, in the, in the wilderness, up in the Hila, they had a reconnaissance plane or a spotter plane, they also bought fuel from us in the month of June. Um, so it's, it was busy out there for a while, even though it didn't, we didn't have a huge fire season, so to speak, we did have fires and we did, we were able to sell fuel to them, so we appreciate that. Um, other than that, um, we're gonna have an inspection, uh, Corte Caminos, the DOT, their annual inspection, they sent us a packet with, uh, about 25 questions that they need answered, so we have, working with, uh, the Director Kim Dominguez on that, and we'll be, a meeting with them, it'll be a two-day inspection, and so, uh, we'll be, uh, getting that together, pretty much got that wrapped up. Other than that, unless you have any questions, um, that's all I really have right now.
No questions? On the, on the fuel, Randy, so just quickly, taking those numbers, I think that comes up to about a, a $50,000 gain in six months. So, now, we use that to pay, jump in if I'm wrong, but the $80,000 lease on trucks, and then we're looking at a part-time person, is that right?
Yes.
So that's just about right.
That's correct.
Breaking even instead of losing money on something.
And, and I think when you look at it, I mean, in, not included in this amount either, is actually the, the service charge that we're getting out of it, I didn't include that in the total. Um, and we do have a service charge on, on every fuel. So, and we're gonna look at that too, it's very low, uh, compared to other, uh, airports, but the reason we did that is because we were very starting, we're new at it. I think Justin has done an outstanding job of getting a handle on everything and working with everybody out there. I've learned a lot about fuel, uh, jet fuel and airplane fuel in airports, in, in the last six months, and, and how this is run. Uh, when you look at the FAA, we had no, we had a clear, um, inspection from the FAA on, on the fuel farm, uh, everything was in place, so, you know, every question they had was answered, and they, and, uh, they were pleased with that, and they were surprised of how far we've come in the little time that we've had, and, and, you know, and the minor experiences we had, that we had in doing this. But, again, I wanna thank all the, the employees out there at the airport, and, and in Public Works as well, because they've been going out there and assisting us with making sure the weeds are down, the runways are, are, you know, clear, and we've had nothing but, uh, you know, good feedback from, from everybody out there. Uh, we're also working on, um, on the, the leased rentals, making sure that, you know, we did increase the rentals, uh, but we're making sure that they're what the people want, we're checking, you know, doors and lights and, and, and all of that stuff that goes along with it. Uh, as you know, we did the, um, the airport, the pilot's lounge, it's being used, it's also being used by Boutique, uh, for a fee. Um, so we've been creative out there of trying to generate some revenue, it's not a whole lot, but if we can break even and start to, as we go into the next, you know, five years, a five-year plan, it looks like we'll be doing all right. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's pretty much business as usual down there. Uh, been doing some mowing, a lot of tree trimming, those Chinese oms are pretty wild this year, and other nights just maintenance down there. I did talk to Engineers Incorporated, they are putting a bid package together to do some utility relocation on Rosedale Road for that, uh, Colonia's project on there, so I'm waiting on that, so we can get going on that. I'm looking at some prices to go ahead and, and, uh, buy some materials for that thing so we can start drawing down on that project, but as soon as we get that bid package out and we get those utilities moved, then we can really get started over there on that thing.
Were you able to, uh, to get any work done on the, the, that little burlap mountain on Sted's Road?
Not yet, not yet. I did take a dozer out there and we did push up some more material out of that burlap pit, but we haven't had a chance to get back out there. We should be, uh, I'm gonna try and chip seal that broken bow, or broken arrow on Thursday, and then I've got some money left over out of the other two projects to, uh, do some fog sealing, so I need to get that done. The city called me and they, they're gonna do some chip sealing, I think August 10th through the 14th, something like that. I've gotta send a couple guys over there to help them out, and then we gotta go over to Baird and finish, and go back and fog seal those streets that we chip sealed over there, but, uh, we should be able to get something done this fall over there to help them out.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I guess the first thing we better discuss is the ICIP. Um, I, I provided everyone a copy of last year's ICIP, um, and there are two additions right now, uh, one is a chip spreader for the road department, and the second would be a Corte Caminos passenger bus. Um, I think that, uh, our discussion maybe today we might focus on, on the priorities of the projects that we have. We have a lot of funded projects, uh, already. Um, we have the facility's ADA compliance, we have partial funding, uh, from the Colonias this year of $100,000. Um, we've got, um, uh, the road department shop was financed or refunded this year through capital outlay. Uh, I will actually, uh, we can do one or two things, uh, I'm assuming that we probably, uh, the ADA compliance, maybe, um, leave that kind of where it's at, maybe move it up for next year's Colonias projects. Um, and, um, uh...
I'd like to give it done for a minute.
We, uh, also, we have, of course, the storage facility, uh, the sheriff's department's facility, we have the courthouse renovation, which, we had our second visit from our engineers on the courthouse, but we should have some pretty firm numbers on how much it's gonna cost to do the upgrade to the, to the electrical in the courthouse soon. Um, so I think that, uh, that we should probably, I have the, the chip spreader, uh, down kinda low, um, but speaking with Earl, uh, they're pretty much in dire need of a new chip spreader, and so, uh, the amount of recommendation to move it up as high as we possibly can, uh, I think it, it worked out for us with the shop, uh, on, road department shop last year, and so hopefully, maybe this time when you can ask for some capital outlay monies for, for new chip spreader, so.
On the state contract, they went up a little bit from last year, it's about 2, what'd it take, 274?
Yeah, 270, about 275,000.
The other thing that I don't see on here, well, maybe I do, is, is under, under Grand County Business Conference Center, uh, that 2.6 million is, uh, part of that furniture pictures? I don't think so, either.
No, I think that the 2.6 million was appropriation that we had already done, but we didn't, we, we identified that, the 2.6 million, uh, the other $2 million that's been appropriated, um, that wasn't in last year's ICIP, uh, we'll certainly add that to, um, the 2.6 million, we identified that, so that we, we still have, uh, application in for EDA for some additional funding, and so, uh, of course, they look at your ICIP also. And so, uh, we'll do some adjustments, uh, to, to the amount of funding on all of these. Um, I wanted to, I wanted to get some input from the commission, uh, before I went in and changed everything, my next work session, we'll have a complete ICIP, and, um, and of course, we, uh, I'm under request that we have a public hearing before our next work session also, and we can get some, some, and if we have any changes, we can get it before the next commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, and Anthony, if I may add, just a couple of recommendations to what you've already, um, discussed. Um, Anthony and I will be meeting in, in the next week or so to start the public hearing process for Community Development Block Grant. It's also important for you to, for, look into the future for the next year with regards to what other potential projects are you gonna be looking for funding for. Being really careful in the sense that as we dip, as we include projects into that ICIP, they're not re, that we're not predetermining, um, what those projects are for, for funding. So I, I just wanna bring up, now, a couple of things that I've heard already, uh, from a state level in regards to capital improvement planning process. Number one, anything that we have on the list that could be a potential CDGD project, uh, we should include that, anything that we're seeing into the future that could be a potential project, we wanna include that. I also wanna mention that, uh, from a CDGD perspective, there's approximately, um, $1.8 million allocated to economic development, there's another million that's allocated for emergency, and then another $300,000 for planning, that's outside of what has already been awarded due to not having enough applications this year. So I wanted to keep that in mind. The second thing I wanted to keep in mind is also in regards to the Colonias funding, um, also looking to see what you could potentially be looking at for funding, so, um, keep that in mind. In addition, um, we also need to start looking at from a transportation perspective, any project that you're gonna be looking at for transportation, uh, whether it's a co-op, uh, local government road fund, anything along those DOT funding mechanisms, we should be including in the capital improvement planning process as well. Um, and those are things that we're seeing changing at the state level. One additional one that is really new to me, that I have not heard before in, in any of the work we've done in capital improvement planning process, is, and I have yet to get this confirmed, is that under the New Mexico Finance Authority, if you're gonna be seeking any type of funding from them, that you're gonna have to have that, um, on your ICIP. My question was, we understand that from a grant perspective and the Colonias planning, um, you know, Water Trust Board, but now what I'm hearing is also that if you plan to supplement any of the funding with a, with a loan from New Mexico Finance Authority, then we absolutely gonna have that included as well. So my goal is to make sure that we're covering all bases. Um, last year's, as you remember, they did not allow us to, um, go back and amend the ICIP. What I understand this year, they will allow us to amend the ICIP, but it will not be included in the changes that are going to the legislators, um, on their online access. So which means that if we're gonna do something that happens in the next few months and you wanna do a capital outlay request, and we can amend it, but it's gonna be really up to us as individuals to make sure that our legislators are informed, um, that it's, that the ICIP is amended. So those are some of the changes. Um, I'm always really cautious, and I work with Anthony a lot, in making sure that I would much rather have five potential projects under CDGD and we list them all, and then, um, at that point, you know, um, I always wanna say, I always look at the entire list, make sure all of those that are even eligible as an activity, and let them in CDGD so there's no question about that we've predetermined a project.
I do have a question. Officer, so what, what would you recommend that we do so that we can help the town of Hurley with the regional project?
I think, um, one of the things that's important, and, and I don't know that it has to be in your top five, because obviously the top five is really relating to capital outlay, but my recommendation is that anything that you can do to put that as part of your capital improvement planning process, I think will be helpful. Because then when I'm justifying from a, from a funding perspective, then I can also say that each one of the local governments has supported that and it's in their capital improvement planning process. So we're looking at, from that angle. Also, there's a new initiative at the state level, which is called the Fund It. If you have any major project that you want them to review, which includes, uh, Economic Development Department, New Mexico Environment Department, New Mexico Finance Authority, Local Government Division, anything like that, we can always present to that Fund It group to see if we can come up with creative, innovative ways to fund that specific project. So my goal is to make sure that we don't skip a piece, so that it doesn't jeopardize us in the end for receiving any of the funding. Um, so now, I've seen even in Colonias, some Southern Colonias discussions, you might have put your project in priority year number two, which would have been, in this case, would be, uh, 18. When it came down to the wire and you were vetting projects and they were both kinda, you know, head to head there, then what would happen is they would look at, well, what priority year did they list their Colonias project in? And then I have to be that kinda detail, and then I have to justify why, what. So to me, those are the things that I see that always should be in your priority here, no matter what, 'cause when I'm defending your project, those are the questions I'm being asked, and I wanna do everything possible to defend you based on my experience as working out with those spending agencies. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So if everybody can just keep with Anthony on their priorities and top five or six.
Yeah, it's how we getting, getting, today, if you got time, uh, on to continue on them.
Yeah, certainly. Another recommendation I was gonna suggest this year is, is moving our county arterial and, and the school bus round project up, and I think that Priscilla just mentioned about transportation projects and, and what the, the DOT is requiring now. Um, also, uh, that would, that would assist in the overall, the regional transportation plan, if we have those identified here of, in our, uh, in our ICIP. And so, like I said, I'd wanna talk to the commissioners first before I went into, um, like I said, prioritizing. Um, I can fill in a lot of information, and of course, it's not on this paper on, on where we're at, and, and, and we just need to have those discussions, and so hopefully, uh, in the coming month, I can meet with each one of you individually, and it shouldn't take more than an hour or so, and we can take care of it.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Um, yeah, we have our, the Colonias projects that we did receive, uh, funding for right now, we're, uh, the, uh, as Priscilla mentioned, the Colonias program is getting a little bit more stringent on their requirements, and so, um, this year before they're allocating the funds, uh, they want specifics on scope of work, on, on final costs, on, uh, engineering, and so we have, engineers ain't hopping right now, and so we can have, that's supposed to be done before September 30th. Uh, I had some discussions with them earlier in the year, and, uh, since, since we have a planning allocation right now, uh, they had a process, and it was over a two-year process. But I discussed it with them last year that we were going to apply for construction funds, and so what we did is we phased the project, and so they're gonna be working on, now on the planning process, they're gonna be working on the phases that we've identified. And so we have an allocation for the intersection of North Hurley Road, uh, 665,000, I think's what it is, and so they're gonna concentrate all their efforts on that portion of the road. Uh, I will, uh, this coming... I will, this coming month, have a resolution as we did on Rosedale Road. We do have some issues with a right of way in that there's really not any right of way identified. We do have a map that identifies all the surrounding properties. So there's actually a right of way in there and what we'll do is we did that last time is provide Mexico Finance Authority with a document that says that we have prescribed to write over those, because we've been maintaining it for years and years and years. We did try to do some research. It's an old highway. It sounds like the next one DOT would have the information, but apparently they don't have any information to help us out, so they don't have any right of way. So, but anyway, like as I mentioned, we have, of course, the courthouse. We had our second visit from our engineer. Hopefully we get some firm numbers for you the next, the next meeting. We also have an approval for the solar structure that we're gonna put to assist with the power at the North Hurley, that sewer plant that we just put in. So anyway, we got approval from USDA and so we got some final plans of that and hopefully we'll get that started soon also.
Anthony, do you have a
Wind Canyon project?
We do. Right now, certainly, and Ray's not here. Daniel had some, some personal stuff he had to care today, so he had to watch the office. But he has been working on all the stuff for the preliminary hearing. As you know, Commissioner, Wind Canyon has probably three times the people of any district that we have, any assessment district we have. And the reason for that is there's only a small portion of the road that's gonna be improved. But what they did was they got all the people in that whole subdivision to, to join in the assessment district so they could, because they all have to use it to get to their homes. And so it's, it's pretty, a large, pretty large endeavor on that one. We do have, you know, some great people over there that have been helping as much as they could. It's just putting together all of those, you have to individually put together a public notice for each individual homeowner. And so we have to get those out 30 days prior, even took preliminary hearing.
Yeah, I'm aware of it. A lot of work, a lot of legwork for us and stuff and went out and got, you know, contacted everyone. And so they've been patient and vigilant in what they needed to do.
Definitely. And they have provided some numbers, quite some numbers for us for, in regards to the, to the amounts gonna be assessed to each individual property owner. That stuff has to be firmed up later on in the process. So yeah, a lot of legwork's done, but it doesn't come till, you know, months into the process. The preliminary hearing is what actually takes the longest. There has to be a legal description of the parcels that are gonna be affected and a description of all of the, of the assessment district, which includes all of those parcels for everybody that's gonna join. So it's, it's a pretty huge endeavor. And Priscilla's been working on this one at the same time, so, so what, he, he knows the importance of it and he's, he's working pretty diligently on it, so.
Anything else?
Priscilla?
Oh, Priscilla, yes.
Commissioners and staff, just a couple more things to add to the Colonias program. Just in my conversations with staff yesterday, really important to note, and I, it's just, I feel my responsibility to let everybody know what's, what's going on with that program. And currently, my conversation with them yesterday is that any award that was awarded in 2012, three years from the date of closing, one of the things that we're gonna be doing in the next few months is we're gonna be being almost twice the month for the next few months to review policy, because obviously we've had a lot of issues with policy and, and the requirements. But the, the chair is very firm about reverting funds on those non-expended reserves funds. And so currently, the ones they're really looking at are 2012. So I just wanna make sure that, 'cause a lot of them, I don't have closing dates for when your grants were closed in 2012. So you have three years from that closing date to expend the funds. They're not willing to extend, have extensions. So just, I just wanna be really cautious that we're, we're, we're gonna make it within that timeframe.
I don't think we got anything from 2012. 2012 I think part of our allocation.
2013? 2013? So, and we know that some of those got started late. Anyway, the other important thing to note, and it's kinda unique for you as a county because you're really one of the few counties that has, has worked with USDA. And so we're having some issues there where USDA has to approve any, any kind of, anytime you have a loan with this particular act, USDA has to approve of that loan. So we think it's pretty simple just to say, we, do we have your authorization? Obviously, it's not that simple. You have a whole page of requirements that you will have to comply with in order to get that permission. The turnaround time for something like that, we're seeing anywhere from one month to two months. So I, anything we can do to get a head start on that, because obviously what's difficult is that we're having a hard time having them understand that it's really not at the fault of the community, that there's all these other barriers that we've been facing, and the non-expended reserves funds are not at the fault of the, of the local government. It's really other things that are coming into play with that. And so I continue to advocate for that. And just anything that you can do prior to the September deadline for submitted, the sooner you get it in, then the sooner they can actually begin to drop the documents. And I think for my communities, it's been unclear then what that means. And that means is that you don't have to have everything done, but if you provide them a timeline of when you would expect that to get done, then they can start processing that immediately. So we don't have to have the design done. And I think that's been unclear for me, and I was a questioner on that. So I just wanted to share that so that anything we can do to get those projects growing and to protect the funds is certainly my goal. Thank you.
Is that the reason for the question, whether or not you have an EDA funded grant? I think it's one of the last questions on the survey that you took, is that?
On the, on the
On the Colonias.
On the USDA?
Go ahead.
Yes. That's the question. So it's very uncommon that you have counties that have those kinds of relationships with the USDA, because it's primarily local governments that have water systems and source systems and special districts. You're kinda unique in that sense because of the, of the North Hurley system.
Okay.
So if you had a loan component to that, you're absolutely gonna have, to have permission from USDA. And we're trying everything possible to facilitate that, but, and I can send you what the requirements are, Anthony, if you don't have that, so that you can commence that process.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, so we'll get that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
That's all.
Okay. Linda, did you, Linda's gone? Okay. But I know that we are, we've moved the budget to Monday morning at nine o'clock in a special meeting to approve the budget. Wasn't quite complete for this, this week. So then we will move on into the sheriff.
Chairman Commissioners, just wanted to report, uh, my staff's been really busy, dealing with a lot of issues going on in the county. Nothing major. Trying to get ready for the upcoming school year, planning for that. I know it's quickly coming, so we're gonna try and get prepared for that. I just wanna report on, on the use of force. We have already done training in regards to that. We're ahead of the game on that. I had an instructor come down from Las Cruces to do the training here, which was no cost to us. So, you know, I was very grateful, I'm grateful to the sheriff from Donaana County for allowing his instructor to come down here and put us through that training. It was very informative and that's how we created our policy, based on the training that he went through on case law and stuff. Right now, currently, we are doing our firearms qualifications required by the state that we qualify every year. That's happening now and that's being done by my staff. I have in-house instructors that does that with, at no cost to the county other than ammunition. Other than that, I just have a question for whoever can answer it. There has been no work done on our vault, but they're starting on the third week without any work and I'm just wanting to know if anybody knows what's going on with it.
Yeah, no idea.
Nobody knows? Just like Randy reported earlier, we did have, the last couple of weeks when we had those big rains, we did have flooding happen in the back, coming in through where they're doing all their work. Luckily, we have maintenance coming, put sandbags and stuff to prevent the water from coming in. So that's why I'm just wondering why the, the work has stopped.
The contract, I didn't realize it hadn't, hadn't been going on.
Okay. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the sheriff?
No.
Thanks. Mr. Assessor.
Yeah, can you give us a map? I trust it'll work okay. It's gonna be great.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, county attorney, county manager. For starters, business as usual. I thank my employees and the assessor's office. We're working quite diligently on our reappraisals, our building permits and, and our protest. We're just about to wrap up our protest at this, at this time. Our deeds are up to date. We're in compliance with the state of New Mexico. I would like to state that before you, there's a map of the TIF area. Steve Armandadis and myself, who received a letter from the town of Silver City on reviewing these, these parcels, and it's for the Silver City Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area. By September 2015, the assessor's office will have a base value on what we have it valued just in that area in those lines. By, once with the base value, we'll see exactly what the value's there at this moment. Then we'll do a review from the past values, so anything that's, that's added to the assessment rolls or taxes, that will be pretty much set aside for the TIF. And that's the tax increment finance. I've been doing a little bit of study on that and it seems like it's a, I think it's a pretty good idea, but we'll find out and see. Most of the properties downtown, they're mainly all commercial. There's probably a couple residential's in here and there, but the majority is, is, is commercials. Everything else is doing just fine. If you have any questions, so.
So everything inside the red?
That is correct, sir.
Is part of the TIF?
That is correct.
And just for everybody out there to explain what a TIF is?
Okay, the TIF is the tax increment finance. What happens is then evaluation that's added to the rolls, the taxes will be put set aside to develop the downtown area. It's gonna take quite a few years before we can actually see any improvements going on downtown. I spoke with Alex Brown and I guess they're going to set up a committee so when all this value, if we do increase, you know, come up with more value, more taxes, like I said, that money will be set aside. They will create a committee and that's how we will distribute the downtown area. It's not for selling purposes, just to try to bring up these properties up to code. That's mainly this, deal with the TIF.
So just to put that in layman's terms, what it does is it freezes the taxes that come to the county at the current level. And when you reassess those properties, the extra amount goes into the TIF that the city can spend to upgrade infrastructure and other items inside the red line.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, during the last month, we've gotten up to 91.21% of the 2014 property taxes collected, 57,622,20 going to the general fund and 8,163,47 to the debt service, a grand total of 65,785,67. So we're staying busy and trying to get everybody vacations and stuff taken care of so they can get ready for the next go-round. So unless you have any questions.
So 91%? Normally traditionally about 98?
Overall, we're at 96 for the last 10 years. And normally, the, from five years back, we're at 99, so, but overall it's 96 and usually around 97.
Okay. Thank you very much. Rob?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Business in the office. No reports today.
No elections coming out?
Nope. Not tonight, too.
Okay. Madam Manager?
I don't really have anything frustrating to report. Just really, really busy in our office. As Brian mentioned, working closely with Gila Regional on indigent billings, medical clearance, looking at presumptive eligibility for those individuals. Very complicated, complicated project to say the least. It's gonna take us a while. Also working with several local groups, ways we can improve our senior programs. That's taken up a lot of time and I've learned a lot about, about that as well. Currently working on updating detention policies as well as purchasing policies and hopefully have those rolled out in the next couple months. Also, still in process of transitioning the health council from the hospital to the county. We should have that hopefully resolved in the next week or so. And then of course, finalizing the budget and thank you all for giving us a few more days to, to get that wrapped up. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? On the, the public hearing on Thursday, instead of the word discussion, I think we ought to put in there public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance. Since it's not really a discussion, it was pointed out to us. Is that all right? Yep? Anything else you guys, anything to say? We have a executive session today. I normally try to get adjourned before we get those started, but, so we will adjourn from the executive session, so at this time I take a motion to move into executive session. Out of those favor, 65% aye? Aye. Motion passes. Rob, can you do us a roll call?
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Ramos, are you, are you aware that you will be entering into
Yes, sir, I am.
Chairman Caston, are you aware that you will be entering into
Yes, sir.
We're now in the executive session.